And you.
Now you stay after the records one.
And I would like to say for the record.
That you gave.
That we gave.
Direction to the.
Direction to the city solicitor.
Handling this matter.
To handle this matter.
Now one from number four.
Alright, number five.
By discussion on process for filing claims as part of motions taken.
Matter for discussion. Michelle and I had a discussion. How did they with claims? For the last maybe thirty years. There's been a process in place. That whenever there was a claim. It would be you'd have to get two estimates. The damage. Um, and that's the way it's been. For long back to remember. You kind of backlogs that a little bit on bottom claims because. People need to drive their car, they can't help hold their car up all the time. So we said. If you bring us one estimate or if. You you bring us the bill, so if you you. I get a car holder, you not tired. When we gets the bill for the tire, we we could count that.
Then we still tell them two estimates or paid receipt. So if they already got it fixed, they got it fixed, right, so. Um, but the problem is where we disagree.
Is how to handle the two for the two S.
Because sometimes the vehicles are undrivable. And.
Take take.
You can't take them somewhere else.
Alright.
Right, so at some points it turns in that that they're over the twenty-five hundred dollar cap now, so then. If I can get one estimate, I know it's going to the insurance company and the adjuster will go out and do another. Evaluation of the vehicle, right? Um, but sometimes again, they can't get the two estimates, it may not be. Over the twenty-five hundred dollars.
Plus it's harder to get us, it used to be. You go to a gas station, give you an estimate. Now the law won't do it unless you know it's a total loss. They have to say a few or four. Yeah. Two guarantee them to fix, you know, for the for the business. They don't want to spend their time doing estimate if they're not going to get the business. So it's a lot harder to guess than. So you also have property, other property that has. Do two S, so the question really comes down to, this is, this is where we had our discussion. On whether. If we're requiring two S. The defense dish, so maybe they they say you gotta get two S. If they get us one estimate. What do we do? Do we hold it until we get the second estimate? Or do we bring it to you? And then you say, okay, we'll accept this, what we want, we want that second estimate.
So the unofficial policy all this time is we were still presenting them to you. And then if you're like, well, we only have one estimate. And um. We we want another estimate then, or you you act on it with the one, sometimes the claimant would be here and explain something. You might act on it with the one. You may postpone it and ask them to get another one and then you'll take it up again. But it was always in your hands and that's where I prefer to have. Is in your hands. And rather than us holding claims in the clerk's office. In a drawer. That may or may not ever be seen again. Cause they haven't perfected their claim. Cause we haven't gotten the second estimate and I don't feel comfortable. Having somebody's damage to the city. Just sitting in a drawer waiting. For someday. And if they don't perfect it, they don't perfect it. But. I'd rather personally have you guys make the decision to postpone it indefinitely. To postpone it until they have, and then I could file that claim away to committee took action. You know, this is the action the committee took, we're filing it away until they come back and then we'll. Have it for reconsideration. And that's what we've been doing.
Yeah, my position is simply if you're gonna require two estimates. And if they don't give you the two estimates, they're not ready to go forward. I won't put Frank in the middle if you don't.
Yes.
Which I really do, and it's between him and Michelle, cause I know.
But we agree on how we're seeing this.
Uh, I mean, I'm seeing your comfort level, but.
Yeah.
I kind of agree with this.
It all volume for you.
It's 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 less and less for two reasons, one. On the car, on the vehicle ones, we don't require two S. You say one S or if you bring the bill in, we'll take everything.
The two.
Well, yeah, but if you bring the bill in, if you get it, you get it, you bring it.
If they got it repaired, yeah, that's.
Cause then you don't have to do that, and most people are gonna do that, they're gonna get a thing repaired, but they need to use the car.
Mm-hmm.
And then, and so that's.
And the major, the majority of what you see is under that twenty-five hundred dollars, so it's it's a pothole claim, it's something they gotta fix the tire right away. So you're not seeing a lot of. The other ones are all going to the trust anyway.
Yeah, another property damage was. They go most of both of the funds, not nearly as many that come to you areas as they used to be when we had much bigger the doctor. We used to have a two hundred thousand dollars gun. Three hundred thousand dollars, so most property damage claim going directly. Thanks, now. Very few, cause most of them are over twenty-five hundred dollars. Especially you get sewer backups if they get a bit of that stuff and things like that. So it's not a huge number of claim, so. The question is, and then we decided, you know, it's not up to us to argue about this side, it's up to you. This is, you know, you decide. First of all, do you still want two click, two estimates, or are you good with one, or do you still want two? And if you still want two. Do you want us to hold them until we get the two, or do you want us to bring them forward and you can say. No, this is not acceptable, we're denying this claim until we get a second, or postponing this claim until we get a second.
And the reason why this came to a head is a recent claim that was filed.
Yep, it's it's one of the claims that I think, I think it's on the docket tonight that's gonna be referred to the trust, it has three estimates in it right now. It was a bit of a language barrier that was. Kind of separating everybody and they they told us that. They had kept their their uh their car in the in the shop for about a month now. And the shop was holding it, is is kind of what they were telling us, and they haven't done any work on it whatsoever. And they keep telling us that, you know, they. The the language barrier was they're saying was they had already done the. Um. They already done everything like the 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 uh. Fixing, but they haven't actually paid for anything, so when I had to actually call the shop themselves, they said, no, we're actually waiting for. A second adjuster to come out to us. To actually get the the second estimate, and so they wound up. Actually having someone come in like three day, I I wound up hearing back from them about three days later. To where they got another adjuster that. Um, came in, probably said about. Two thousand dollars less than the original estimate, and then they still wound up taking it to another shop and got a third estimate, which was about a thousand dollars less than the original estimate.
See, I felt bad that it was sitting there a month undrivable, because people needed their vehicle. And. It's being held and we're thinking that there's going to be another. You know, um. Estimate, but it's being held by the shop and it wasn't, and nobody, we weren't moving on the plane. It was just stuck and I did these, you know. That's that's where.
So so as as requested, requested I did put out of last, so the other clerks. Let me what they're gonna do. Some clerks respond to be, what's a claim?
They didn't even ask that question.
Yeah, they don't even handle. Some claim, some cler, a lot of clerks apparently don't even handle, sometimes it goes to the finance department, sometimes it goes to public works. Sometimes it goes to the law department, I got about four or five responding. You know, and they all do it different. They all do it different. Some.
How about Rujia, you had a question?
Yeah, I did, um, well, yeah. Question statement, alright, I've seen it where we've gotten, I fairly recently, it was a tree about on a um. Fence and it was quite a difference between the two um uh process and. So we gotta protect the taxpayer here, right? But I also believe that if you have a vehicle and it's not drivable. Well, then how are you gonna get a second estimate? So is it something that we have a caveat, we have it's a vehicle? Just need one, we'd rather have two.
Well.
If it's not drivable, can I finish, right, or thank you? And if we, if it's not drivable. And on property, it just needs to be two, because we, I've seen. Very big differences in estimates, just the one I'm trying to think of where it was. Uh, it was off a slate of pockets, about a tree that hit a fence and there was quite a a difference in the price, I think it was. Over double, uh, one.
No, I agree with you, yeah.
So I think we need to do that, but there's gotta be. I don't know legally, they don't like gray areas, but it's gotta be gray area with a vehicle that doesn't move. You know, that can't move.
Well, we, like you said. If you take a vehicle to get it, get it fixed. Give us the bill. That's all you need to do. That's what we've been doing. If you give us the bill. That's it. And then, and then you've been, you've been basing the decision off of that bill set, now if you take that bill out of the whack. Then you can go and say, no, we don't agree with this amount, we're gonna give you less, so you have to get an estimate. That's what one of the other towns will say, do one estimate, if they think of. If they don't agree with it. Then they make them go get a second. So we.
That puts it on hush for us to really understand, we don't, we're not. Body, we don't. That's not our feel.
And a lot of these, I don't, I can check them, check a lot of these potholes and this obvious standard that it can't go over certain.
Three month.
Right, so that kind of takes a little bit away from two, right? Because I mean, you already have a limit.
It's mostly with accidents, mostly with, you know, hit by a car, or hit by a city vehicle.
Usually that's over twenty-five hundred, generally.
A lot of city, so that goes to the.
It just on, well, just accountable, I I.
I'm not trying to.
No, I, I, I.
No, let me.
I understand that, but I'm trying to play both, I mean, devil's advocate on on both sides, but I'm leaning more towards. This is like, at least what we can do to protect the taxpayers as much as we can. Even though it's. I know it's a level of uncomfort, but then maybe we could create a different system internally. Maybe we don't take that in until, if it's not a vehicle, if it's not something that needs to be immediately repaired. It's not something we could take in, or we take it in if it's a vehicle. But if it's something that really could wait and hold two estimates, I think that. I'd feel more comfortable with that directions, continuing that direction, my opinion.
Yeah, we've seen it, yeah, in and of all, all three of them same, and anybody.
Different.
Maybe whoa, we've seen way different estimate, you know, i- if if the property owner was made whole and it can be made whole with a lesser amount. Then they made whole and the tax payment is paying less, so that's a system I agree with.
Haven't you?
Yes.
I agree with everything you said. Um, I'd say with two S. Maybe if they come in with this one. We don't take it in, shock them and stop.
Exactly.
And you have to come back. Now maybe you could split the baby. On pothole because of the gap, and we have a pretty good idea of what. Sixteen inch tire or seventeen inch tire. But so, but anything else, I I don't know, we just, we just, what Tommy said, they got three S ultimately. And one was a thousand less than the first, and another was down like that. I think you know what the taxpayer is to.
And we have to find.
Hold them accountable, which is.
Um, I. And maybe that's initially what we can ask, if they just heard us one, we we give them the opportunity, we give them an extension of some sort to be able to come back with that. Second.
Yes. Cause a lot of times it is, it is with them, you know, with their filing, they're trying to get on a seven day timeline.
Right, exactly.
It's hard to get two estimates within seven days when you're still working. And the incident wasn't your fault and all of a sudden your tire, you know. Sometimes you have to get that tire fixed right away. And you're paying that out with one bill.
I've never, I've never. Except, I've never believed that you need to have it to estimate. It it is not the.
Exactly.
Just to file that.
You have to file.
So you file, it's like.
Absolutely.
So the problem lies is when it's a a vehicle damage that's near the twenty-five hundred dollars, right? So we know it's more than three hundred dollar pothole.
Mm-hmm.
And so now we've. We're just putting it all on hold. And not moving the process along with it being referred to committee, which is only once a month. And these people don't have the money out of pocket to have it repaired upfront. And we're not sure if it's gonna hit that. Cap or not. And so then it gets tricky, right? Um, and so we're then we're holding their claim. You know, if they bring me, come in with one estimate and I say, no, I can't take it, or I'll take it to make the date stamp, but we're not moving it. Until you bring in the second one. Right? And so now. You only meet once a month, they have to wait another. You know, three or four weeks for a check. And they're. You know, they're out of pocket, and so that's, we try to get the process moving for them, and so that's where it gets tricky.
I say with most, most vehicle, most vehicle claims, especially the pothole claim. They're getting them repaired right away, if it's high. The tire is a wrench, it's a moat, they're getting them repaired, you're accepting the bill as. Between the. Estimates, so they don't even have to go out and get the rest. So in that case. They they can't escape. She's right, if if it's up close, close to twenty-five hundred dollars, you don't know which way it's gonna go. But if somebody said, maybe why you need the second estimate, so if it does go over. Now it goes to the trust. So. I I mean, whatever way you want to do it is fine. Want to take it in and then, you can take it in with one estimate after X number of months and then either deny it or or say you got. One month to approve this, otherwise we're gonna deny it. Um, you know. If if that's a claim, so we're not holding them forever. You know, you hold them for so, we hold them.
It's their duty.
I I need it.
So at the end of the day, if they're not showing up with a second estimate, that's not on us, that's on them.
There is.
And I hate to say, I understand, I I hate to say that, but it's kind of like. We have a job to do. And ours is protect the taxpayer. I would maybe recommend us. Maybe figuring out an extension for them or something that way.
They don't need an extension, because they got time, I mean, the only time, the only time that's gonna live it really is the potholes, and all they have to do is. Submit the submit the form.
But I don't think, it doesn't state that on just on the document, they say, uh.
It just says to file within seven days.
But it doesn't state, yeah, they, but does it, does it say that they don't need two estimates at the time of filing?
No, it just says file, so file, as long as they file it, they don't have to have any.
Oh, have.
They can bring the estimates when they want, they'll they'll be delayed to get made, I mean, but. As long as they file on time, it's all like two months, two estimates. Will be those.
See what I'm saying, it just, maybe what we need shows a little more clarity on the document.
We can look at that.
Just a recommendation and maybe a little bit of discussion.
So that it's clear that it comes to us.
It may.
The 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 question, the question really comes down to this, if they will, if it's an estimate, if it's a claim that requires two estimates, and they give us one. You want us to hold it off. Until we get the second.
Continue to file, I am going to take it with me. You need to follow the the current protocol.
Well, like I said, the current protocol is we give it to you at the length of. But you're, you're saying, you're saying that.
In that instance where the the it was in the shop for a month being held because of miscommunication somewhere. Right, that's a month that that person went without a vehicle and that could have been very clear liability. And now we've held it up a month. Right, and we have it moved it forward. Because they didn't have it, now granted, they have, they three S, but the committee should say, you know. We received your claim. We're reviewing it, but it's not complete, and you really need to get another estimate before we take action. I just feel that that's the committee's absolute role and right to do that. And but it shouldn't be the clerk's office. Holding claims, processing some, I just feel like all should be processed to you to make the decision.
I, I don't disagree with that. Uh, Chair said, it's on this.
Yeah.
I got it.
You know, I I come in, I file my claim in time, I got just one estimate, I don't know how difficult it is to say to them. This is gonna sit on my desk until you come up with a second estimate, and then it's it's. Clear as dash, I'm sorry. Any miscommunication on that particular, it's. If not, it's city ball, it's it's between the oil body shops and our vehicle owner and. Whoever else, but that nothing to do with us, that shouldn't feel bad, but the fact is, we have a process for a reason. So, and I I agree with everything Chair said, and we'll include in holding them accountable.
So we don't have to go down. Certainly.
Yeah, we just, we we, I, we wanted to see, we wanted to look at it. Feel the previous, hold it, then we hold it. Move it to you, move it to you.
We didn't, we really need to have two S. But then, but I I realized the vehicle.
Yeah, if it's a vehicle, we've always accepted the bill. If they get it fixed, we've always accepted the bill, you've always accepted.
Okay.
So.
That's what, that's what. Our motion to.
No, I just want to help have a.
I'm sorry for the show and not without.
It's ninety percent of the battle, come on, I mean, you're battling, you 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 you're crying to form a.
My, 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 my mental note, let's.
Never.
Well, we visit this for a little while and see how big my pile is.
Motion for adjourned, second by uh, motion made by Councillor Rujia, second by Councillor Moreno. Are we adjourned?
Never, never cried about me when I.
Yes.
Do you want that?
Your people's stomachs, I just. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I can't assist with that request.
Mr. Rubio, Mr. Russo, Mr. Moreno, three to zero, roll call. Yes. So you're playing.
I will be saying that we have this plan on our plate and you're like, you know, actually.
I know you're gonna get in.
I just thought I was gonna be a lawyer too.
Hey, I'm sorry.
Hi. Oh. I mean.
Counsel.
Yes. You only have one.
We have two.
Yeah.
Appointment to parks and appointment to planning. Okay, so who's who's here? My God.
Grace is Grace Grace here.
How about Lee Eskelson?
Yeah.
Neither neither is here. Good evening, everyone. Is Grace Evans-Patino here tonight for her pre-counsel? And how about Lee Eskelson? Okay, they probably couldn't hang around or didn't come. Doesn't affect anything. It just tells us where we're about to move. So we're now on the board of license commissioners, yes? Okay. The Board of License Commissioners will come to order. Clerk will call a rule. There is none.
President.
Here. Here.
Here.
Yeah.
Right.
Here.
Here. Here.
Mr. President, I call for approval of the previous minutes of May twenty first, twenty twenty five.
The move by Councilor Russo, second by Councilor Codier, that we approve the minutes of the previous minute of the Board of License Commissioners from May twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. Are there any concerns, amendments, deletions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye opposed, motion carries.
I call for approval of item number two to consent agenda and item number three petitions for licenses starting with public laundry, AM Taylor and Dry Clean down to Victor Linghouse Second Class Babes Pie Company on Kenyon Avenue.
The move by Councilor Russo, second by Councilor Moreno, that we give approval to items two and three to consent agenda and petitions for license that starts with the public laundry renewal for AM Taylor and Dry Clean down through Victor Linghouse Second Class New Babes Pie Company. Any matters the board would like to address? In that case, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item four, the following application for license renewal was postponed at the meeting held on May twenty first, twenty twenty five, and again is taken up. Auto repair shop and secondhand shop class B parts only renewals Larry's Auto Repair Loreno Doc de Cuto five nineteen Patucket Avenue, license number A U T twenty four dash seventy five with the following stipulations. One, no painting or auto body work, no parking on Glenwood Avenue. All work shall be done in building, no storage of junk cars or pots outside. And stipulation per zoning board of December fifth, two thousand and eleven. The business shall not operate after six P M. There shall be no music of any kind playing outside. No tow trucks or flatbed trucks shall be parked on the street. Employees parking shall not be permitted on the street. There shall not be any outside repairs. All repairs shall be done inside the facility. And there shall not, there shall be no more than eleven vehicles stored outside the facilities. My motion is to take up this application.
It's been moved by Councilor Russo, second by Councilor Gregor, that the following application for a license renewal that was postponed on the meeting held May twenty first, two thousand and twenty five is again taken up. It's the auto repair shop and secondhand shop class B parts only renewal. Larry's Auto Repair Loreno de Cuto, five nineteen Patucket Avenue. There are three stipulations, no painting or auto body work, no parking on Glenwood Avenue, all work shall be done in the building and no storage of junk cars or parts outside. In addition to six stipulations set forth by the zoning board in December, on December fifth, two thousand and eleven. Those are the business shall not operate after six P M. There shall be no music of any kind playing outside. No tow trucks or flatbed trucks shall be parked on the street. Employee parking shall not be permitted on the street. There shall not be any outside repairs. All repairs shall be done inside the facility. And there shall be no more than eleven vehicles stored outside the facility. The motion is to take this renewal up again, and we will do so. This is not a public hearing. Councilor Gregor, did you, I think you invited the the license holder to come in, correct?
Yes, I did, and I have had a chance to speak to him. So the, let's see. He's expressed an interest in trying to see what he can do to remove the stipulation. I told him that's a separate thing that he would have to petition. So I move for a vote on approving his license.
So you you're going to approve the renewal renewal as is?
As is, with the stipulation.
And you're satisfied with your discussions with him?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, in that case, it's been moved by Councilor Gregor, second by Councilor Russo, that approval be given to the renewal of the auto repair shop and secondhand shop class B parts only for license number A U T dash twenty four dash seventy five. All the stipulations, the the ten total stipulations remain in place. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item five.
Item five, the following petition for license was postponed at the meeting held May twenty first, twenty twenty five, and is again taken up. Entertainment in class F one full privilege petition of Y B Marketing for license to have a Latino Summer Fest and to sell alcoholic beverages at Festival Pier twenty one Tim Healy Way on Saturday, August second, twenty twenty five from two P M until ten P M. License number E V T twenty five dash twenty two. Motion is to take it up.
The move by Councilor Russo, second by Councilor Codier, that we again take up the following petition that was postponed at the meeting held May twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. It's an entertainment in class F one full privilege petition of Y B Marketing for license to have a Latino Summer Fest and to sell alcoholic beverages at Festival Pier twenty one Tim Healy Way on Saturday, August second, two thousand and twenty five from two P M until ten P M will be license number E V T dash two five dash two two. Anybody who's wondering Festival Pier is really P I E R, not E E A R? I believe. Are the are the petitioners here? Anybody from Y B Marketing here? Ma'am, if you could come forward, give your name and home address, if you would, to the clerk.
Hello, my name is Jocelyn Barrero, and I live one zero nine Glenwood Avenue in Potoque.
Rick, do you have that? Ma'am, what was your last name again?
Barrero.
Barrero. Okay. Ms. Barrero, I'm going to turn this this matter over to Councilor Codier. The Festival Pier is in her council district.
Thank you, Mr. President. How are you, Ms. Barrero?
I'm good, and you?
Good thanks. I know that you've been doing this for quite a few years now. How long you've been having this festival?
Organized this event for seven years, but before as Colombia Summer Fest. But this year, we want to bring more inclusive event for Latino community.
Is this a a family festival?
Yes.
Yes. What you what you provide in the event? What do you have?
Yeah, we want a different organization representative, different countries, Guatemala and Dominican. And they bring a culture, custom. We have live music, D Js and different kind of food, different food, Colombian food, Dominican food. Yes, it's more family event.
Okay. Before I continue, I would like to know if anybody has any questions or anything to say?
Jocelyn has had the Colombian festivals. She's saying it's changed. It used to be in my district. Just, you know, obviously this year's district, I never had a problem in our district.
Thank you.
You know, they always set up really well, broke down really well, never had any issues. So just giving you my opinion on when she was in my district, how it went.
Thank you.
Actually, Counsel, I know last year was it was Pine Street?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's that's where it's been in your district, right? Slightly different type of atmosphere than down in the middle of your district, down on Tim Healy Way. I see it asks, it suggests a ten P M ending time. Are you are you comfortable with that? I'm just just throwing that out there because it sounds like you're gonna have some other things to say. But just knowing what you have done and said in the past about that vicinity, I was just wondering about the ten o'clock ending time.
Yes. The the reason why I ask you if this is a family event and if you have vendors, it is very important to know that this is something that the community and the the neighbors can also go and enjoy with their kids. However, the music, I've been having concerns with my constituents. And the first, the music can not be too loud because I will be getting phone calls all day long from from my constituents. And also the music have to be off by eight thirty P M.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilor Codier, if I may, I've actually attended several of her festivals, and I think that they're extremely one inclusive, very family oriented, and I appreciate how you organize everything. So I just wanted to give you my positive feedback in regards to her festivals as well.
Thank you.
And also, it is very important that when you're done with the festival, we like the the park to be clean.
Yes.
Completely clean. And and that's one of the biggest concern is the the families, a lot of families on that area. And the the music is is my one of my biggest concern. And that and the the time also, the time of the of the of the ending, the ending time.
Okay. Okay, eight thirty, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And just and to keep it clean. I know that we spoke over the phone and we have a few conversations, but there is, you know, there these are the questions that I had. And also thank you for my colleagues for giving me feedbacks that you already assisted to this event. So, Mr. President, how can I make a motion with the eight thirty?
You you can do just that, but I you're suggesting music ends at eight thirty, but the license would go until ten or some other time? Because you you only mentioned music. I'm just wondering if 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 you're going to approve it from two P M until eight thirty P M in total? Or the eight thirty is solely music?
Yeah, they're gonna let you get a little mistaken about because music's only eight thirty, music is thirty.
If if that were the case, that the music were to end at eight thirty, is it likely that you would want to
Ninety?
Stay around nine nine o'clock would work? Okay.
Yes.
And that I then had one more question for you, Counselor. You talked about cleaning up afterward. It is a public park, so to speak. Do you have a a time when you would like to see it? Would you expect to clean it up that night or the next morning?
The same date.
The same day?
Yes.
Perfect, because we've had a few folks who went down there and didn't come down until sundown the next day to pick up.
We usually run a dumpster and we have a staff clean and in the middle of the events and when they finish.
Leave it as is when you leave sometime after nine P M?
After nine P M, like eleven, because we need to clean and everything. The event can finish at nine, right? But the staff, we can stay like for clean and everything.
Yes, exactly.
Two is that I go in the morning and just make sure that by twelve P M, everything is completely clean.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion would be from two to nine with the music stopping stopping at eight thirty and that the staff and volunteers would clean up entirely and leave it as they found it before they leave that night. Is that?
Yes, but I have a question. If the event ends at nine, we can start more early at two?
You're you're asking.
Oh, two, okay. I have a tree like.
Yes.
Confusion. Okay.
So I mean, would would you prefer to, if it's ending at nine, would you prefer to start it? One or is two appropriate for you to get everything set up?
Two is fine.
Two is fine. So two to nine with the music stopping at eight thirty and cleanup completed the same night?
Yes.
Okay, is that your motion, Counselor?
Correct.
Okay, so that's been moved by the Councilor Codier, second by Councilor Russo. That approval be given to the the license for the entertainment in class F one on August second from two P M until nine P M, and the music would be turned off no later than eight thirty P M. And cleanup would commence afterward and be completed, excuse me, before they vacated the property. Does that sound agreeable to you?
Yes.
Okay, that is the motion, seconded by Councilor Russo. Is any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. You got all that, Rick?
I mean, you know, there is a, there is a, oh. If if they use city property, they have to pay four hundred dollars. And if property is cleaned up.
They get it back.
They get it back.
Yes.
If they don't clean it up.
Right, we understand that, but
Thank you.
But the times it's happened, it's been more costly than four hundred dollars for us to number one, clean up, and it's taken an entire day, if not two, where the citizens who paid for that can't enjoy it. So that's that's the only reason I was asking.
Thank you.
Yes, you're all set, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item, yeah, item number six petition for license entertainment in class F one full privilege petition of Church of the Assumption of the Virgin Mary Greek Orthodox Church to conduct a church festival and to sell alcoholic beverages at ninety seven Walcott Street on Friday, August twenty second, twenty twenty five from five P M until ten P M. And Saturday, August twenty third, twenty twenty five from twelve P M until ten thirty P M. And Sunday, August twenty fourth, twenty twenty five from twelve P M until nine P M. License number E V T twenty five dash twenty five, motion to take up.
The move by Councilor Russo, second by Councilor Codier, that a petition for license for entertainment in class F one full privilege petition the Church of the Assumption of the Virgin Mary Greek Orthodox Church to conduct a church festival and sell alcoholic beverages at ninety seven Walcott Street on Friday, August twenty second, two thousand and twenty five from five P M until ten P M. Saturday, August twenty third, from noon until ten thirty P M. And Sunday, August twenty fourth, from noon until nine P M will be license number E V T dash two five dash two five. Motion is to approve. Any discussion?
No discussion.
In that case, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item seven.
Item seven petition for license entertainment in class F one full privilege petition of Cape Verdean Museum to conduct a Cape Verdean Independence celebration and to sell alcoholic beverages at one twenty High Street indoors and outdoors on Saturday, July fifth, fifth, twenty twenty five from twelve P M till seven P M. License number E V T dash twenty five dash twenty six, motion to approve.
The move by Councilor Russo, second by Councilor, was that you, Councilor Rubio? Council Rubio, that petition to Cape Verdean Museum to conduct a Cape Verdean Independence Celebration and to sell alcoholic beverages at one twenty High Street indoors and outdoors on Saturday, July fifth, two thousand and twenty five from noon until seven P M. License number E V T dash two five dash two six. This is your district, Counselor? No? High Street?
It's I think it's my my district.
Yeah.
Any discussion on that petition?
If those.
He's here.
He's here.
Yep. Is the applicant here for the Cape Verdean Museum to conduct the Cape Verdean Independence? Sir, if you could just step forward, same thing, if you give your name and home address, please, to the clerk. High Street, not you.
It's um Jose De Mora, one seventy five Broad Street, Pawtucket, Rhode Island.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um again, I'm gonna turn this over to Counselor Codier. I thought it was in Counselor Moran's district, but it's Counselor Codier's district.
Look, can you repeat your name again?
Jose, Josad De Mora.
Josad De Mora?
Yes.
How are you?
Joe, for short.
Yeah, Joe. I'm also the executive director of Cape Verde Museum.
I understand that you've been having this event for many years now and um uh the only uh question that I will have is um the the outside. Um so it's for for the whole family also, right?
For the community, everyone's welcome, of course.
And what what do we also have? I haven't I haven't been at the event.
Yes, and you haven't visited. You've seen him either. And so, no, no, it's just a a general get together and they laid on that evening, there's a game at the stadium celebrating the same thing. So it's a whole day celebration for the Cape Verdean community.
Okay, if anybody has any any.
Counselor Gregor?
Uh it it also uh celebrates Cape Verdean Independence Day, so and I also wanted to extend on behalf of the council uh condolences for the loss of your brother Joe. Thank you, Counselor.
Sorry. Glad to hear that.
Thank you. But it's also that she had the fiftieth independent year of the independence of Cape Verde, so I recommend all of you attend.
Yeah, we will be having a few.
Yeah, just real quick, um you know, I've been to a couple of your events as well, Rand, um never have an issue, full support of this and uh um I hope you have a successful uh event and uh sorry about, you know, your brother.
Thank you.
Well, I'll just add one thing for the outdoor uh no glass. Snapware, no glass.
No, I've been, I've done this before.
Got you. Okay, uh.
I would like to make a motion to approve.
Then moved by Counselor Codier, second by Counselor Gregor. That approval be given to the petition for an entertainment in class F one, full privilege uh by the Cape Verde Museum to conduct a Cape Verdean Independence Celebration to sell alcoholic beverages at one twenty High Street, indoors and outdoors uh Saturday, July fifth, from noon until seven P M, license number E V T dash twenty five dash twenty six. Any discussion on the motion to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good luck, Gregor.
Item number eight, petition for license entertainment in class F one, full privilege petition of Colombian American Cultural Society to conduct Colombian Independence Day Festival to sell food and alcoholic beverages at one hundred Main Street, Apex Parking Lot um on Saturday, July twelfth, twenty twenty five, from one P M until ten P M. License number E V T twenty five dash thirty three, motion to take up.
The move by Counselor Rujo, second by Counselor Codier, that an entertainment in class F one, full privilege petition of the Colombian American Cultural Society to conduct a Colombian Independence Day Festival to sell food and alcoholic beverages at one hundred Main Street, that's Apex Parking Lot on Saturday, July twelfth, two thousand twenty five, from one P M until ten P M, will be license number E V T dash twenty five dash twenty dash thirty three. Uh motions to take up the petition, Counselor. Are you wondering if the petitioner is here?
He's here.
Is the petitioner here?
Yes.
If you could come forward, sir. Same sort of situation, if you could give your name and home address to the clerk, please.
Thank you for calling me, sir. A lot of people call me different names. My name is Gabriel Martinez. I'm a one forty two Oakland Avenue, Pawtucket, O A K L A N D.
Thank you. Uh again, this is also in District Four. Having a lot of party, having a lot of parties.
Good, how are you?
The party district, yeah.
Yes, I guess. Uh I you've been doing this.
Been doing that before you born.
I just wanted, I just want to know what do we have for this year?
What do we have?
Yes.
What kind of music?
The vendors.
Well, we're gonna have vendor food.
Uh-huh.
Um ice cream, you name it. I gonna sell beers. And water and soda.
Just anybody?
Does anybody have any other questions? Counselor Rubio?
Counselor Codier, if I may.
Yes.
I've actually been a part of it since I was a kid.
Yes, you were.
Going to it for years and years, and I think it's also a fantastic community event, and I appreciate everything you do for our community, so.
And I remember when we were younger, you used to sing in the festival, too.
Let's leave that outside the council.
Wait, I've been, I just get denied. Don't try to, don't try to practice. I've been at the festival many times, too.
Counselor Gregor?
Yes, um I just, I was just curious, do you usually conduct it at the Apex Park Lot?
Usually no.
Is this the first time?
The first time, yes. Last year, we did a McCoy Stadium.
Okay.
Or the Juan McCoy Stadium, not anymore.
Okay, thanks.
Hmm.
So if approval was contingent upon Counselor Rubio singing us a little. You could make that motion, Counselor.
That's a great idea.
Any other discussion on this? Okay, then I'll I'll entertain a motion, Counselor.
I would like to make a motion to approve second.
It's been moved by Counselor uh Codier, second by Counselor Rubio and Counselor Moreno. Uh that approval be given to the petition petition, the Colombian American Cultural Society to conduct Colum- Colombian Independence Day Festival and sell food and alcoholic beverages at one hundred Main Street uh Saturday, July twelfth, from one P M until ten P M, license number E V T dash twenty five dash thirty three. The motion is to approve the petition. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I just wanna say something. Music is gonna be stopped at eight, the most eight thirty, eight to eight thirty, no more than that. The rest is cleanup.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
See you then.
Thank you.
Item number nine, petition for item number nine, petition for license entertainment in class F one, full privilege petitions of Achilles Perez Mendez to conduct I Love Bravo Sunset Festival and to sell food and alcoholic beverages at Festival Pier twenty one Tim Haley Way on Saturday, July twelfth, twenty twenty five, from four P M until ten P M with a rain date of July thirteenth, twenty twenty five, from four P M until nine P M. License number E V T dash twenty five dash thirty one, motion to take up the license.
The move, guy, move by Counselor Rujo, second by Counselor Codier, that we take up an entertainment in class F one, full privilege petition of Aquiles Perez Mendez to conduct an I Love Bravo Sunset Festival to sell food and alcoholic beverages at Festival Pier twenty one Tim Haley Way on Saturday, July twelfth, two thousand twenty five from four P M until ten P M with a rain date of the following day, the thirteenth, again, from four P M to nine P M on the rain date, license number E V T dash twenty five dash thirty one. Is the petitioner here for this one? Once again, sir, if if you're gonna be the only one speaking, if you could give your name, if you go both gonna be speaking, just give your name to the clerk, please.
All right.
Achilles Mendez, thirty five Allen Avenue, Pawtucket.
Jose Martinez, ninety nine Thomas Ave, Pawtucket.
Thank you, gentlemen. Yet again, this is in Counselor Codier's district. Um you've heard some of the same things she's the concern she's had for her her district and her neighbors in that area about the use of Tim Healy Way, the Festival Pier. So I will now turn it over to her.
Hello, Mr. Pier, Mr. Martinez, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Uh how long you've been doing this festival?
This is our eight years.
Eight years? Uh is this a nonprofit organization?
Uh no, we do uh charge a fee at the door.
You.
Yeah.
At the door. Um. What do you offer during the festival? What is it gonna be there?
Uh it's uh basically uh live music, DJs, um performance artists. And then we have uh food, uh civic culture, Cape Verdean culture, uh there's people that's gonna be rocking t-shirts, as you can see this one, and um basically what we do in the island of Bravo.
So you said that you're gonna be having vendors there with the food, with the food, just food?
Yes.
Okay.
Constable, Rick, could I ask a question? Do we allow for tickets to be sold for events being held on city property?
I'm not aware there's anything that against that.
Okay, I'm I'm just wondering, I I don't know that any other events that are held on city property come with a an entry fee.
That is, I will be able to pay for all the costs for the music and everything else.
Is this a family event or adult event?
It's adult event.
Does anybody has any question before?
Counselor?
Um, Mr. Mendez, um my family is from Bravo, too, so um but you you said that you folks have been doing this for eight years, we know issues, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um. I.
Where where have you done it in the previous seven years? This is the first time you're asking to use the pier, though, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, that's
We did.
That's kind of the sticking point.
We did it for seven years in the same location.
Where?
Uh I think it's Roosevelt Avenue. It's a.
Oh, okay.
Right off the exit.
Gotcha. And why are you not going back there this year?
Because they construction over there.
Gotcha. Counselor, you had a question?
Oh, yeah, it is.
No.
Okay, Counselor Rujo?
So um and Counselor Codier has alluded to this before, the biggest problem with the Festival Pier area um with the music, right? So um we've gotten a lot of complaints, I think a lot of the, at least me, myself has. And um so that's why we always ask a lot of these questions, you know, um I have remembered you coming for the Roosevelt Avenue um uh location, and they've always run a good thing. The only thing is it's the music is the issue with the residents over there in that area, you know, because it it now the Festival Pier is being used more. Um, you know, the the music becomes after eight thirty or so, you you start to get a lot more of of the complaints, so uh just wanna make you uh aware of that, and then it'll be up to the council what she decides to do. So that area is it's a great area, but there's a lot of residential around there and um you know, so the music has gotta be kind of at a uh at a at a at a good level, not not too too loud, you know?
Yeah, respect that.
Um the uh the issue that I have or the concern that I have is uh that if it's a family event and there is vendors and uh but this is just a an adult bin, it's just adults and it's uh um charging at the door, basically. I I am very concerned about my constituents uh with this uh type of uh parties. Um, I really don't consider this a festival. I I I um Can I, I I would like to postpone this for the next meeting, Mr. President.
Okay. That would give us time after that. So uh the motion is to continue this petition to the next meeting, which is June
Twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth. Uh, any discussion on the motion to continue? Counselor?
I
Rubio?
Um, just so we're, so we have something moving forward. I think the previous recipient that came for the Latin festival might also be selling tickets. So.
Yeah, but that is a family event. This is is with kids. This is only adults event.
Which one is that?
Um, the Latin, uh what is it called? I'm sorry, I'm the Latino Center Fest.
That was that apex, yes?
No, that's the same location, so I just wanna make sure we're all on the same.
Right, so we did, we did end that one at eight thirty. I I think I think the counselor is correctly making the distinction. This is you know, this, it may say the word festival because it's a festival here, but this is kind of like an outdoor nightclub for the night. That's really, that's really what it boils down to, and I think that's what her concern is about intrusion on on the neighborhood. Am I, am I getting that correct, Counselor?
That is correct.
Um, uh, on the other hand, you know, and and for the sake of equity, you know, we've got to we probably have to address this issue in its entirety about alcoholic beverages being sold down there. You you cannot sell alcoholic beverages in in Slater Park, you know, or any other, most other uh properties that are city property unless it's uh unless it's part of the the Arts Festival, so um we may not be able to get to the bottom of this right now, but we do need to address it. Before you say anything, Counselor, I I'd just like to recognize Counselor Wilderhand.
Yes, Mr. Mendez, I would like to ask you one question. Uh how many people uh you expecting down there?
Maybe four or five hundred.
Four or five hundred? Now, I do you have a police detail for four or five hundred people?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we do.
How many do you have for for four hundred people?
We have four.
Four?
But we have like fifteen sponsors also.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Gregor, could you have some?
Yes.
I thought you didn't know.
No, I'd say this is uh Counselor Codier's district. Um um since this is the first time they doing this, and I don't wanna intrude in the jurisdiction there, um is anything you would need from them that could help with uh taking a look in at it the next continuation?
To uh to be honest, this is uh this is a um a a public place for the family to go and enjoy. This is a place for the families to go with uh with their kids. And if we're having festivals there, it's for everybody to to go and have, like I said, have food, vendors with the souvenirs, the culture stuff. Uh this type of events, to me, uh where it's just adults and is um with music, DJ singers. Uh, this is uh this is what I I consider this a um a nightclub in an open area. Uh, and I get very concerned with my 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 constituents. And you're gonna, guys, you're gonna hear this a lot, but um and I'm gonna say it again. My constituents are my priority and I stay to that and I
So if I if I could interject, you you have made the motion to continue until the twenty fifth. Would you like to pursue that motion and then between now and the twenty fifth, maybe have a a dialogue with the petitioners? Would that be helpful to you?
If 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 there is some changes to um, yes, I would like to have, I would like to have a meeting with uh with them before.
Okay, sir?
I have a question. So the reason why we do it, we don't require ID at the door. We say it it's an adult event because there's alcohol is involved. So we try to protect the children's where there's alcohol, there could be anything. So that's our main reasons why we say it's an adult, but we don't ID nobody at the doors. So basically, it is a public event, so we don't require ID again, but
But it is a for-profit event. It's not, it's it's, at the end of the day, you're gonna make money.
Right.
Right, and that's and that's not concern, that there is an outside entity who is making money by the use of public property to the exclusion of other folks who don't wanna come down there, right? So that that's where the concern is. It's 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 a concern for noise in parking, and it's a concern for I would say misuse, not misuse by you folks, but just a misapplication of what it is the the city expects to see down there. You know, it doesn't, we didn't build that and refurbish that pier to become an outdoor for-profit nightclub, right? So that's that's the the hiccup we have here. That's the the concern we have. But Counselor, do you think pushing it off to the next meeting and having a discussion with them will change anything, or how do you wanna approach it? You've already made that motion. Do you wanna just go ahead with the motion to continue? And that'll give you a couple of weeks to have a discussion with the petitioners?
Yes.
Okay, and I think, Counselor Rujo, you you already seconded
I did.
The motion to continue, correct?
I did. If I didn't, I did not.
So in that case, the it's been motioned and seconded to continue this to the meeting on the twenty fifth. Is there any discussion now about that motion? In that case, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, gentlemen, so the council will try to reach out to you, or you can reach out to her between now and the twenty fifth and see what can or cannot be worked out, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have a time petition for license entertainment and expansion of premise one day petition of Aloha Restaurant Lounge for license to have a brunch de tardi color and for a one-day expansion of their Class BV liquor license to have food, serve alcoholic beverages and to have a DJ at nine oh two Main Street Outdoors on Sunday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, from three PM until nine PM. License number E V T twenty-five dash twenty-nine, motion to take up.
The move by Counselor Rujia, second by Counselor Gregor, that a petition for an entertainment and expansion of premise for one day of Aloha Restaurant Lounge for license to have a brunch de tardi color and for a one-day expansion of their Class BV liquor license to have food, serve alcoholic beverages and have a DJ at nine oh two Main, Main Street Outdoors on Sunday, June fifteenth, from three PM until nine PM. It would be license number E V T dash twenty-five dash twenty-nine. Is the petitioner here? I think I saw him. Mr. Lopez, how are you? I couldn't see you behind the, behind the, uh, podium there.
Oh.
Uh, again, just your name?
Yes, Adelino Lopez, uh, twenty-seven, Whitman Street, Pataca, Rhode Island.
And, Mr. Lopez, welcome. This is actually finally in a different district. It's District Five. Counselor Gregor, it's all yours.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Lopez. Now, I have spoken to you, so, um, I have, uh, reservations, not only in terms of this particular, uh, petition here with the new restaurant, but also in terms of things and events that have happened in the past that have been associated, uh, with you putting it together. So I have done a random sampling of the neighborhood and and not necessarily because of these events, but as a general practice, seems like there's a lot of music, um, loud noise coming even on the weekdays and I've, I've said that to you. Uh, there's been incidences, I have some uh, crowding, police coming down, uh, I don't have the narratives for these, so, which is why I told you I would, I'm not gonna be able to approve your first one, however, for the second one, uh, as long as I get, um, reports, because I have requested it from the police in terms of what their recommendations are, because you're in a highly residential area over there. And the people over there, and it's not just, you know, obviously because of your restaurant or anything like that, but they have been plagued with all sorts of issues, uh, including, you know, loitering, people hanging around drinking drugs and all sorts of things over there. And I don't know that having an event with over three hundred people uh, helps that situation any further. So that, that's been my concern with that, um. So I can't, I can't in good conscience approve your fif- uh, June fifteenth uh, license until I get some narrative from the police in terms of what their recommendations are.
Yeah, but my question is, um, if your peoples go, you know, Main Street, right, if your peoples stand up on the corner, that's my fault because my restaurant is on the middle.
That's not what I'm suggesting.
Control the peoples, uh, around the corners.
That's not what I'm suggesting, but I'm just saying that neighborhood is, is general practice has been plagued with a lot of, uh, things of that nature and having people come down over three hundred people, because I mean, that that's the thing. You have said on a couple of occasion in your last events that you were expecting fifty or sixty people, it never turns out to be that. It's always a lot more than that.
But this is my, my, my whole petition, but the whole petition I did for the brunch de tardi, I put a hundred and fifty people.
Yeah, well, it was a lot significantly more than that, based on my speaking to the neighbors and
Neighborhoods anytime is gonna complain. Every time they're gonna complain. If I have one neighborhood, they don't like me or they don't like the crowds over there, they're gonna complain every day. They complain every, I have to close my business.
No, that's not what I'm suggesting.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, I don't think the council was suggesting that, but again, your business is a restaurant. It's not a outdoor weekly, weekly festival thing. You will, you asked for a license to, to run a, a BV restaurant. That's within the doors, and if you want to go outdoors, you have to ask for permission for that. And the counselor is having a little bit of hesitation about granting that.
But I, I never put the music outside the restaurants on the weekend. I put it just on the day, that day, I, I have the permission for the brunch de tardi.
And, and that, that's what he's telling you, that you, you have, you run a restaurant, you're asking for special permission two weeks in a row to go outside where your, number one, your parking would be, and number two, that the people surrounding your area have to endure that. And the counselor rightfully has some concerns about that. It's got nothing to do with you have to close your business. That's not what he said.
No, no, um, they told me about the, the, I have the low music on the weekend. But I never put my, my, my sound outside. My sound is inside on the weekend. If I put a sound outside is when I asked for the permit, that's why I tried to say.
And that's what we're talking about. We're talking about the two, the two requests for one day each to have music outside. That's what his concern is. His, his concern's not about you playing music outdoors when you're not asking to do that. He's, he's got a specific concern about both of the things that you're asking for. And if I heard you correct, Counselor, uh, these are chronologically together, but they're item ten and item eleven.
Yeah, they're two different dates.
Are you suggesting that you are going to deny, because it's so close at hand, the June fifteenth? Um, actually, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have an, another meeting before the June twenty-first petition either, so just however you would like to handle it is fine, but and we'd have to handle them individually, item ten and item, item eleven, but we
Yeah.
we couldn't address item eleven addressing your concerns before the date, because our next meeting is the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, um, yeah, that's true. Um, so, so, Mr. Lopez, you know, if it wasn't for the way in which you misrepresented and been honest with the council on prior, uh, events, it'd be one thing. Um, but this is amplified by the fact that you are in a heavily residential area, which, which is plagued with a lot of issues. Not, not directly with you, which, which is what I'm saying. I understand you're not responsible for that. But, you know, I get some basic reports that crowds are staying way past the time, and even though you say you end at ten, the party's not over, they go into your establishment and they hang, you know, until closing time.
That's why I, I have my bosses over there to make sure everyone living, like, at ninety fifty-five, nine forty, I stop the music and I, I click everybody, oh, okay, last time they happen, because the cops go, leaving like at ten, ten twenty.
Yeah, but
Nobody's there.
I understand, but which, when you say it ends at ten, it doesn't end at ten. It doesn't end till your, your restaurant actually closes, it's just moved inside.
Yes, they moved inside, yes.
Yeah, and that's an awful
Because my license is until one.
Yeah, I understand that, but it's just an awful lot of people that, that, uh, restaurant can accommodate. One of my issues too is from speaking to a couple of the neighbors, they didn't even realize that you were a restaurant. They ended the impression that you're a nightclub because of the music playing so loud even on the weekdays. I, I'm just telling you, when I told them, no, it's a restaurant.
On the weekends or on the weekdays?
The weekdays. I'm not necessarily with this event, so, I mean, I appreciate what you do. You're trying to promote events and such, but maybe that's not the best venue for that. You, you like to have large crowds and such, maybe try to look for something else, but for now.
But when, uh, we did the brunch de tardi, the after-party, it'll continue in Providence, in Noir. Nobody stayed there. Everyone's going to the Noir in Providence.
Yeah, well, um, see, unfortunately, I was just gonna, um, motion to deny the June fifteen, however, the June twenty-first is gonna be before the twenty-fifth, which is the next time we're meeting. So I don't really have a choice but to move to kind of, um, deny both of these. You're free to apply again, but, uh, and again, I'm waiting for a report from the police, which I'm gonna ask. They give me the impression as well as the fire department about how this, this particular events that you're trying to do on a particularly regular basis. And it's one thing if you were doing something, uh, once or twice a year and it's, it's an event, but when you're asking for it such as a regular, almost, you know, bi-weekly basis, um, it creates a different impression. But, but again, my concern is with the residents over there, as I said, not necessarily your fault, but this is an area that's highly plagued with various sort of things and adding more.
I have to move to another place?
No, but, well, Mr. Lopez, you know, don't, please don't mischaracterize what I'm trying to tell you, okay? You and I both have taken the time with you, I've taken my personal time to go around your neighborhood where the restaurant is and spoken to several random residents over there that I could find and some of them are willing to talk to me. And I'm getting an impression different than what you're suggesting. And your past actions have not been truly represented what you, you put down on the papers as what sort of event you're looking for. You said ambient sound, having a DJ blasting music. It's not ambient sound. It's a different thing, isn't it?
What do you mean, for the parties outside?
You were here the last time we approved it, you, and I asked you, is it ambient sign, sound just for your patrons? You said yes. Having a DJ blasting music is not ambient sound. So, uh, I'm not trying to be antagonistic with you, but I'm just trying to tell you what it is. My concern, I feel terrible for the neighborhood. They are suffering a whole bunch of, and not just because of, uh, anything that your events might bring forward, but adding extra people over there and traffic noise and everything else is not something that they need right now. Uh, you're free to reapply and maybe we could work out some parameters where you could do these things. It's not gonna be, I'm not gonna be approving on a monthly basis. If we can come to some understanding, it's not gonna happen like that. Uh, so. I might not like what I have to say, but that's what the reality is.
Anybody else want to weigh in? Again, we're only on item ten, we will go to eleven. Um, anybody want to weigh in any further? Um, I'll just say this, I, I support everything Counselor Gregor has said. Um, you know, if you, if you're running a restaurant, you're running a restaurant. If you're running an outdoor nightclub, it's a whole different story, especially, you know, Sat Sunday and then the following Saturday and then frequency thereafter. You, you've got to decide what you want to do. And if you want to be a nightclub, it's probably gonna be some other venue in some other city, so.
Uh, my question?
Nope, we're, we're all set. Counselor, uh, your motion is to, we're only on ten. Your motion is to deny item ten, a petition for a license for June fifteenth, is that correct?
Yeah, it is.
Do I have a second? Second? The reasons? Okay. In, within the motion? Okay, so I'll, I will articulate, I'll try to articulate what it was you, you said, Counsel, and you correct me if I'm wrong. That you are moving to, to deny the petition for a, an event on June fifteenth from three PM until nine PM, that would be entertainment and expansion of premise for one day because the, the area is already, uh, overrun with, uh, or plagued with an assortment of problems that this would only exacerbate. Is that?
Uh, not just, no, it's not just, that's also the, uh, the
And the, and the, and the music?
The music.
In a, in a, in a dense, in a densely populated area.
With the parking additional, so.
Okay, i- i- are, are those the reasons for your motion to deny?
It, it is, and, and with that, I just want to add, so I, I am gonna be needing a police report and fire report, uh, relative to um, feasibility of having these sort of events at Aloha Restaurant.
Okay, let's deal with the motion to, uh, to deny first. It's been seconded by Counselor Wilderhand. For the purposes articulated, is that good for you, Rick? Okay, so that is the motion to deny for those reasons. Is there any discussion on the motion to deny? All in favor of denial?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, within item ten, are you now requesting a police report? Counselor Gregor?
Uh, I am.
Or an update, what is it you'd like to?
I'd like to get a summary report relative to any incidents, um, associated with Aloha Restaurant or any prior events that these had, and this would be April twenty-seventh, um, and then May twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, I forget which day, when was the rain date? I'm not sure if you had it at twenty-fourth or the twenty-fifth.
Wait, so the, the clerk's office would have the dates of those events, is that what you're saying?
Yes, when they were actually here, because he had a rain date, but also, uh, uh, I'm looking for any narratives or report of incidents, um, of any sorts associated uh, within the plaza or, or particular, uh, the Aloha Restaurant, especially in the event dates, or anytime in between.
Okay, do you have that, Rick? You, you have the dates that the counselor is speaking of, so.
The last couple of events.
That have been licensed, that they were also one-day expansion of the premise, right? So that, those are the dates the council is referring to. But the move by Counselor Gregor, second by Counselor Moran, that, uh, we request from Kentucky Police Department, uh, any reports or narratives about, uh, nine where, what's the address? Nine oh two Main Street and the vicinity, uh, particularly on those two dates that you have the the dates for.
Yeah, yeah, and I would include call logs, so, of any sorts, complaints, such.
All right, but that, that's the motion. Is there, uh, any discussion on the motion, Counselor?
Excuse you, just a question for Mr. Lopez, like I asked before with the other people. Do you have police details of these things?
Yes.
Okay, how many people are you expecting to? Were you expecting?
Normally one fifty.
One fifty, all right, thank you.
So, as you know, Counselor, you know, the police department determines whether or not there is a, a need for doesn't mean we can't put one on anyway, or the, the district counselor can't put it on anyway, but even if we don't, or even if we say we don't think there's one needed, it still is up to the director of public state.
Correct, I, I understand that, Counselor President, but it, again, a lot of times when people are looking to have larger crowds, they end up taking the initiative themselves and booking it, so I just wanted to find out if that, that happens.
Okay, thank you. So the motion is to ask the police department for any pertinent reports relative to that area and those dates. Accurate? All in favor?
Yeah.
All in favor? I motion carries. Now we're on to item eleven, Counselor Rujia?
Sure, item eleven, uh, petition for license entertainment and expansion of premises one day. Petition of Aloha Restaurant Lounge for license to have I Love Sao Vicente event for a one-day expansion of their Class BV liquor license and to have food, serve alcoholic beverages and to have a DJ at nine oh two Main Street Outdoors on Saturday, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, from three PM until ten PM. Rain date, June twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, from three PM until nine PM. License number E V T twenty-five dash thirty. License, uh, motion is to take up this license.
Uh, it's been moved by Counselor Rujia, second by Counselor Gregor, that we take up this petition for a license for entertainment and expansion of premise one day. Petition of Aloha Restaurant Lounge to have a I Love Sao Vicente event for a one-day expansion of their Class BV, BV liquor license to have food, serve alcohol, alcoholic beverages and have a DJ at nine oh two Main Street Outdoors on Sunday, Saturday, June twenty-first, from three PM until ten PM with a rain date of the following day from three PM until nine PM. License number E V T dash twenty-five dash thirty. The motion is to take up. Do you have a similar, uh, motion to make, Counselor?
Yeah, I thought we already did that, no?
No, we, we, we had to treat them differently, uh, independently. We had item ten and item eleven, so, well, if I summarize your, your motion, it would be to, to deny for the same pers- purposes articulated for the June fifteenth event?
Yeah, it is, and as I stated, Mr. Lopez, he's still here. Um, unfortunately, our next, uh, meeting day is the twenty-fifth. So it, that wouldn't be in time to, uh, be able to approve your June twenty-first event, so. Unless you want to change the date, we can take a look at that, okay, so.
Okay, Rick, are you good with this, with the same articulated reasons? Okay, so it's been, been moved for the same reasons as item ten, that we deny item eleven for a one-day expansion of premise of Aloha Restaurant on Saturday, June twenty-first from three PM until ten PM with a rain date of June twenty-second, from three PM until nine PM. Any discussion on the motion to deny? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item twelve?
Item twelve, entertainment and expansion of premises one day petitions of, uh, Bejitos de Brava for license to have Saint John Fest and for a one-day expansion of their Class BV liquor license and to serve food and alcoholic beverages at six eighty-two Roosevelt Avenue Parking Lot Outdoors on Sunday, June twenty-second, twenty twenty-five from five PM until nine PM. License number E V T twenty-five dash twenty-seven, uh, twenty-five dash twenty-seven. Previous stipulations, no glass used outside, only plastic outside cleaned up by ten AM the next day. Motion to take up.
Second.
This is your district, yeah?
Yes, it is.
All right, move by Counselor Rujia, second by Counselor Moran, uh, entertainment and expansion of premise one day petition of, uh, Fejos de Braba for a license to have Saint John Fest for a one-day expansion of their BV liquor license to serve food and alcoholic beverages at six eighty-two Roosevelt Avenue in the parking lot outdoors on Sunday, June twenty-second, from five PM until nine PM. Previous stipulations have been no glass used outside, only plastic, and outside be cleared up by ten AM the next day. Motion is to take up this petition, Counselor Moran.
Mr. President, I talked to Mr. Galveo, Jose Galveo, earlier today. He's been certainly the individual that runs these events and and again, several years in the council, he's had several events similar to this, and I haven't had any issues whatsoever, so with those same stipulations previously mentioned, I'm gonna make a motion to approve, and unlike Counselor Rubio, I will not be singing at this event, just to let you know.
Second.
Everybody will welcome that. The move by, move by Counselor Moran, seconded by Counselor Codier, that approval be given to a petition of, uh, Fejos de Brava for a license to have a Saint John Fest at six eighty-two Roosevelt Avenue on June twenty-second from five PM until nine PM with the same stipulations, Counselor? Correct. The same stipulations. Any discussion on the motion to approve with the same stipulations? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item thirteen, petition for license, entertainment and expansion of premise one day, petitions of Pico's Restaurant and Hookah Lounge for license to have a concert and for a one-day expansion for their Class BV liquor license to serve food and alcoholic beverages at one ten School Street with Parking Lot Outdoors on Saturday, June twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five from five PM until ten PM. Rain date, June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, from five PM until nine PM. License number EBT twenty-five dash thirty-four. Motion to take up.
The move by Counselor Ruzio, seconded by Counselor Codier, that we take up a petition for license for entertainment expansion of premise for one day of Pico's Restaurant and Hookah Lounge for a license to have a concert and for a one-day expansion of their BV liquor license to serve food and alcoholic beverages at one ten School Street in the parking lot on Saturday, June twenty-eighth from five PM until ten PM and a rain date of the next day, Sunday the twenty-ninth from five PM until nine PM. Uh, license number EBT dash twenty-five dash thirty-four. The motion is to take up the petition, Counselor Codier. Is the petitioner here? Sir, if you could step forward? I can't see people behind that podium. Sir, if you would give your name and address to the clerk, please?
Uh, Azvaldino de Silva, seventy-one Merrill Shoot, target of running zero twenty-six oh.
Counselor Codier?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Mr. Silva, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Nice to see you again. These, uh, it's, it's just a concert, can you please, um, specify what type of concert?
So, we're, we're bringing an international artist, um, that, uh, sings skateboarding music. So it's gonna the event is really from-
Cultural, okay, very, okay.
Yeah, so it's really from, um, five to nine. The reason why I put five to ten is the extra hour was just to get everybody out of there to clean up.
Okay.
Music will be off by nine.
Okay, and you know that there is no glass out, um, in the, uh, outdoors?
Yes.
And also, um, um, the same concern with the music, you have your, you have your, you have your mirror to measure the, the, the volume, right?
Yes, that.
And we said to face the music to the other side. You know how I feel about the volume?
Yeah, I'm aware.
Okay, and I would like to know if anybody has any, any questions or concerns?
Any, Counselor, uh, Wildenhain and Counselor Gregor?
So, did you say the music's going off at nine o'clock?
Yes, so the extra hour, the reason why I put in five to ten is just to give us an extra hour to tear out and clean up.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Gregor?
Yep, um, I had an opportunity to speak to Mr. De Silva previously, and he seems like a reasonable man who's taken all the steps necessary to make sure his event goes well. And he understands, uh, that if this is successful, he, he's able to do, you know, more events of these sorts.
That's what we're trying, and it's just out of getting people to cooperate sometimes, you know? The guess out of hand is not always, you know, us, you get random people that come from random places, you know? What I tell people is, you know, people go through tough times, and it's sometimes that happens to happen in your place, you know? And that's, that's being in that kind of uh, social space, I see it all the time, you know, the breaking point is just so happens to someday just be on your place and you gotta deal with the fallout. But, you know, I try to promote good events and that's, that's all I, you know, stand on.
I also see that you've, um, been doing, um, um, helping people with needs with their personal, um, peers and stuff like that, homelessness with food and, and things like that. I just wanted to mention that and say thank you for the, for your, for what you're doing, uh, side of your business.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so, yeah, uh, we're doing a Feed the Homeless Cookout on a Friday, um, the twelfth. So it's not always about, you know, parties and stuff, it's more that I try to do to, you know, uplift the community, but that's just one of the small things we can always all do.
Thank you. Uh, okay, so I was, um, we just said, uh, with the music and the volume and the outdoor no glass, and
So, I'll, before you make a motion, I'll just weigh in, you know, you've been here a number of times, Mr. De Silva, you you're toward the end tonight and you hear exactly what it is we're going through, right? And, you know-
I feel bad for, for Codier.
We tend to look at it, you know, as, as restaurants, not as outdoor nightclubs, you know?
Yeah, I mean-
And the frequency of when people are asking for these things definitely changes our, our attitude.
No, I hear it today, and it seems to be more, more and more often, and I think, I think part of it too is, you know, um, restaurants are trying to make, people at own restaurants are trying to make money, because during the winter it gets really tough. And it's just finding ways to get people outside to, you know, help cover all the expenses that you have during the winter, because it's been really slow, especially with the immigration situation, nobody's going out. So, you know, everybody's just trying to do what they can to make it happen, so, you know, it's tough all around. I mean, it's not in his shoes, but it's just tough.
With the rest of the, the folks in the area, and I, I do know that the first couple of times you had an outdoor event, I actually got phone calls. I don't really know why it's not my district, but I got a number of phone calls and I did pass them along to Counselor Codier, so when you hear us say that we get calls, we really do, we get calls and people are annoyed that they cannot enjoy their living room or their back deck or their backyard or whatever the case may be, or take their, take their, you know, infant for a, a walk around the block, so please keep it in mind, I guess is what I'm saying.
No, I understand your concerns, and, and like I said, everybody's, uh, sensitive to different level of noise, and I certainly understand, we, we try to do our best and I try to be as engaged as I can with the audience, let them know, hey, you know, this, what, if we, if you don't cooperate, we can't keep on doing this, you know, I but I certainly understand where you guys are coming from.
Okay, thank you. So now I, uh, I will entertain a motion, Counselor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to approve, uh, Pico's Restaurant.
The move by Counselor uh, Codier, seconded by Counselor Gregor, was that you? Sorry. Um, and Rubio, I'm sorry, uh, Counselors Gregor and Rubio, second, uh, approval for an entertainment expansion of one-day premise, uh, uh, Pico's Restaurant and Hookah Lounge to have a concert and one-day expansion of their BV license to serve food and alcoholic beverages in the parking lot at one ten School Street on Saturday, June twenty-eighth from five PM until ten PM, but the music will be off by nine PM, correct?
Yes.
Excuse me, with a rain date of, uh, the following day from, excuse me, five PM to nine PM. All in favor of the motion to approve?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen, petition for license, entertainment and expansion of premise one day, petition of Rocks Bar PPC, I'm sorry, PCC Ventures Incorporated for a license to have Rocks Annual Summer Party and for a one-day expansion of their Class BV liquor license to have music, serve food and alcoholic beverages at four fifty-one Prospect Street Outdoors on Saturday, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, from two PM until eight PM. License number EBT twenty-five dash twenty-three. Motion to take up.
The move by Counselor Ruzio, seconded by Counselor Codier, that we take up a petition of Rocks Bar, uh, PCC Ventures Inc. for a license to have Rocks Annual Summer Party and for a one-day expansion of their Class BV liquor license to have music and serve food and alcoholic beverages at four fifty-one Prospect Street Outdoors Saturday, June twenty-eighth from two PM until eight PM. License number one, license number EBT dash twenty-five dash twenty-three. Motion is to take up the petition, Counselor. Uh, I don't believe that petitioner is here, are they? Rocks Bar?
No, but, um, they, uh, this place has like a hundred years. They had a conversation with them over the phone, uh, they always come every year when they're gonna do this event and, um, it's the same event, I just want to make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Counselor Ruzio, uh, Counselor Codier, seconded by Counselor Moran and Counselor Ruzio, that approval be given to petition of Rocks Bar for license to have Rocks Annual Summer Party for a one-day expansion of their Class BV license to have music, serve food and alcoholic beverages at four fifty-one Prospect Street Outdoors on Saturday, June twenty-eighth from two PM until eight PM. And I'll just make a motion before we vote, that this is a one-day, a year event that they have, and it's never caused any problems, and the folks in the neighborhood have come down and said they, they enjoy going to this, so that's, that's the, the difference of what we're
Yeah, so it's basically, all the whole, the whole neighborhood goes, um, there, everybody, yes, mm-hmm.
Gotcha. Okay, any discussion on the motion to approve? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item fifteen?
Item fifteen, entertainment and expansion of premise three days, uh, three days, petition of Remandado Davino Espero Santo Saint Anthony's Church Corporation Batucat to have Saint Anthony feast in for a three-day expansion of their Class D liquor license at twenty-seven Forest Avenue, indoors and outdoors on Friday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, Saturday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and from seven PM until eleven PM, and Sunday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, from five PM to nine PM. License number EBT dash twenty-five dash twenty-four. Motion to take up.
The move by Counselor Ruzio, seconded by Counselor Gregor, that a petition for a entertainment expansion of, uh, premise for three days, petition of Ermadande, Do Davino Espero Santo, Saint Anthony's Church Corporation Batucat to have, did I do it? No?
No, no, they're fine.
Oh. To have, I thought I did a good job. Saint Anthony Fest for a three-day expansion of their Class D liquor license at twenty-seven Forest Avenue, indoors and outdoors on Friday, June thirteenth from, uh, and fourteenth from seven PM until eleven PM, and then Sunday the fifteenth from five PM until eleven, uh, nine PM, I'm sorry. That'll be license number EBT dash two-five dash two-four. Motion to take up the petition, Counselor Gregor. petitioner is here? Did I not say it right? Okay.
You did it pretty well, Mr. President.
Ah, thank you.
I've heard of very, a lot worse.
I wrote it, I wrote it down phonetically so I could try to get it right.
No, 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 I've heard it worse.
Uh, how you doing, Josh?
Good, how are you?
Uh, I have had an opportunity to speak, uh, with Josh, and this is an, um, annual feast that they do, and there's never been any incident that I know of, so, um, unless anybody else has any questions or comments, uh, would move for approval.
Counselor?
Going on for, obviously, years and years and years and years, and, uh, they never have an issue, and I'm actually, Josh has been doing so well with the parish and keeping our culture alive, so I appreciate that.
And again, this is a Class D, this is not a Class BV, so there are distinctions in what we do here, so, um, did you make a motion to approve? Is that what you said, Counselor?
Uh, yes, I'm making a motion to approve.
So it's been moved by Counselor Gregor, seconded by Counselor Stokoviac, that we approve a petition, uh, for Saint Anthony Feast for a three-day expansion of their Class D liquor license at twenty-seven Forest Avenue, indoors and outdoors Friday, June thirteenth, Saturday, June fourteenth, both from seven PM until eleven PM, and Sunday, June fifteenth, from five PM until nine PM. Any discussion on the motion to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen, petition for license, entertainment and expansion of premise one day, petition of Club Social Portuguese for a license to conduct an annual outdoor picnic feast and a one-day expansion of their Class D liquor license to serve food and alcoholic beverages at one seventy-four Portuguese Social Club Way Parking Lot, indoors and outdoors on Sunday, August third twenty twenty-five, from eleven PM until nine PM. License number EBT dash twenty-five dash twenty-eight. Motion to take up.
The move by Counselor Ruzio, seconded by Counselor, Counselor Codier, that we uh, approve a petition of the Club Social Portuguese for a license to conduct an annual outdoor picnic feast and one-day expansion of their Class D liquor license to serve food, alcoholic beverages at one seventy-four Portuguese Social Club Way in the parking lot, indoors and outdoors on Sunday, August third, two thousand and twenty-five, from eleven AM until nine PM. It's license number EBT dash twenty-five dash twenty-eight. Again, the motion is to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
No further business coming before the Batucat Board of Licensed Commissioners make a motion that we adjourn and reconvene as the Batucat City Council.
The move that we adjourn, Batucat Board of Licensed Commissioners convene as Batucat City Council, before we do, I ask that everyone stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance, started by Counselor Codier.
The flag, the edge space of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, that is all for liberty and justice for all.
Batucat Board of, Batucat City Council, come to order, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Ruzio?
Yeah.
Counselor Ruzio, Counselor, uh, President Mercer?
I'm still here.
It's too late at night, it should be home in bed.
Hey, he called me, I said, yeah.
Yeah. President Mercer?
Here.
Counselor Ruzio?
Yeah.
Counselor Codier?
Still here.
Counselor Gregor?
Yeah.
Counselor Moran?
Here.
Counselor Moreno? Counselor Rubio?
Here.
Counselor Stokoviac? Counselor Wildenhain?
Here.
Nine in attendance.
As advertised for a public hearing, a res, uh, public hearing on the resolution authorizing a fifteen-year tax stabilization agreement for Pine Street Development LLC for the property at three twenty-seven Pine Street, plot number forty-four, lot five ninety-two. Motion is to convene this public hearing.
Second. The move by Counselor Ruzio, seconded by Counselor Wildenhain, that a public hearing be convened regarding a resolution authorizing a fifteen-year tax stabilization agreement for Pine Street Development LLC for the property at three twenty-seven Pine Street, uh, flat forty-four, lot five ninety-two. The motion is to convene the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
I would, to play the public hearing open, um, I know Aurora, you are here, and, um, Bob Burns, you are also here, right? And the rest of the planet. Can I have the three of you guys come up? Um, just to move this along a little bit more quickly? And whoever wants to quarterback this, probably you, Bob, um-
Be happy to.
Have at it.
Mr. President. Uh, three twenty-seven Pine Street, Pine Street Development LLC developed a hundred and eighty-four market rent units on the site of an old mill. The unit size is between seven hundred and sixty-eight and nine hundred and fifty square feet. They are of average construction and good interior finish. The current taxes that we charge the property is fifty thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars, uh, with assessed value of two million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand. The ask complete value is estimated to be seventeen million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, which complies with the, with the fifteen-year tax stabilization ordinance. These are the same developers that did Nelco Lofts at thirty Beecher Street, uh, a mill conversion of a hundred and twelve units, a hundred and twenty-five Goff Avenue, a mill conversion of a hundred and forty-nine units, uh, a hundred, uh, excuse me, over a hundred units, sixty Dexys Street, a mill conversion of fifty-three units, and one seventy-three Weeden Street, a mill conversion of a hundred and forty-nine units. Um, this developer is consistently delivers on their promise, and we support the state tax stabilization.
What will be the total, uh, tax obligation at the end of the agreement?
Somewhere in the three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar range.
I thought three sixty-five, three seventy.
So roughly three hundred and seventy thousand?
Yes. And now the phase would begin December thirty-first of this year.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Bob? Or we want to hear from everybody and then?
Okay.
Do you have a question for Bob, or?
No.
Okay. Do we want to hear from planning? Do we want to hear? Do we need to hear from planning? Uh, in that case, um, uh, Ms. Lee, would you stand, come up and, um-
Good evening, everybody.
Uh, tell us what you'd like-
Nice for you guys.
Tell us what you'd like to, uh, tell us about this, but, um, I will, I will say that Bob is correct, that you have for the most part, delivered on everything you've told us that you would do with each of your properties and each of your developments, and it has been a boost to the city and a boost to the tax base, so we do appreciate that, and, and having a good track, track record makes it much easier for us to entertain additional things like this, so, um, anything you'd like to tell us?
Well, I'd like to thank you. Um, we've received nothing but support from zoning approvals and tax stabilization, um, programs, and I'd like to say that the program does help the developers like ourselves to obtain initial financing and also just to, um, semi get on our feet once the development is finished. um semi get on our feet once the development is finished and gets occupied. It's it's a great help to any developer. So and we do appreciate through all the years, must have been over fifteen years now, um, you've guys been a great support for us. And we do appreciate it as well. And we're glad to be here and working with you and looking forward to doing next one.
Okay, thank you. Now time for a question?
Yeah, not a question, but just a comment. Uh, I appreciate uh all the effort that Director Burns puts into these things. He really does a fantastic job and and Aurora and her partners are really an asset uh to the city. They've they've been built up our base like the like they stated, they they make commitments and they follow through on their commitment. So it's appreciated and I want them to know that.
Thank you.
Council Gregor?
Yeah, I too appreciate uh investors who actually come here uh with their own investment and only asking for some help in terms of tax savings as opposed to uh using taxpayer uh as a guinea pig to uh fund the project. So thank you. Appreciate it.
We we would like to ask as least help as possible, but take advantage of what's available to us within our means. So but we do appreciate it. The program is absolutely helpful.
Anybody else?
Just want to add that we don't, we don't give out the fifteen year treaties, you know, like it's candy at Halloween. So I mean, you definitely have earned your stripes. So thank you very much. So.
Thank you. And this is the first time we're getting fifteen year.
Yep. That's not lost on us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here tonight? This is an advertised public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak on this TSA? Is there anybody online? Nobody online. In that case, I will declare the public hearing closed. We will be addressing this later on. Um, but I don't know that you necessarily have to stay around.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you both.
Next item is as advertised for a public hearing, a public hearing on the annual operating budget ordinance twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. As amended, my motion is to convene this public hearing.
The move by Councilor Russo, second by Councilor Wildenhan, that would convene a public hearing regarding the annual operating budget ordinance of two two, two thousand twenty five, twenty six. As amended, the motion is to convene the public hearing. I would declare the public hearing open. It is nine oh one. Uh, is there anybody here tonight for this public hearing to discuss the operating budget for the fiscal twenty sixth year? Uh, that we amended at the previous council meeting? Anybody online? In that case, I will declare the public hearing closed at nine oh two.
Item number one, I call for approval of the previous minutes of five twenty one, twenty twenty five of the Joint Finance Committee and the Committee of the Whole of the City Council.
The move by Councilor Russo, second by Council Wildenhan, that we give approval to the minutes of the May twenty first, two thousand twenty five meeting of the Joint Finance Committee and Committee of the Whole, as well as the City Council. Is there any concerns, amendments, deletions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed motion carries.
Um, hmm, this President, if I can um hmm, move to amend the agenda to introduce a letter and as a wish regarding the Vision Zero Safe Streets for All Plan.
The move by Councilor second by Moran, second by Council, uh, sorry, Council Moreno, second by Council Moran, that we amend the docket for the purpose of introducing a letter and resolution regarding the Vision Zero Safe Streets for All Plan. The motion is to amend the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Aye. Opposed motion carries.
And I would also like to move to introduce a letter from Commerce Director Jason Lo Uzo regarding the Vision Zero Plan to be at an order um filed and to introduce a resolution entitled a resolution of the City of Pawtucket adopting a Vision Zero Safe Streets for All Policy to be placed on the June twenty fifth docket for a but oh.
The move by Council Moreno, second by Council Moran again uh to uh motion to introduce the letter from Commerce Director Jason Pazulo regarding a Vision Zero Plan to be read and ordered filed and to introduce a resolution entitled the Resolution of the City of Pawtucket Adopting a Vision Zero Safe Streets for All Policy to be placed on the June twenty fifth docket for a vote. Is there any discussion about the motion to uh file the letter and the motion to uh file the resolution and put it on the agenda for the twenty fifth? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed motion carries. Thank you, Councilor.
Item number two, a call for approval of the consent agenda and correspondence.
And move by Councilor Russo, second by Council Moreno, that it will be truly given to item two, the consent agenda and correspondence. Are there any matters on from A through L? On my left, anybody on this side? Any, oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Gregor, I didn't see you.
Item F?
F? Is that it? Yes, I'm sorry. I I thought you were still searching. Anybody on this side? Okay, with the exception of item F, all in favor? Aye. Opposed motion carries. Councilor Gregor, item F.
Yeah, uh, relative to item F, this is a communication from John Karlick, Blackstone Distribution Center LLC to the honorable members of Pawtucket City Council on La Shasta Street, quarter one, twenty twenty five construction update. Uh, which was previously postponed. Uh, I believe it were the reason why it was postponing it. Um, the last one's because the uh budget was taking up a lot of time and the dates have been changed.
You moved it up two meetings to not conflict with the budget.
Yeah, so uh and the budget is here, so I would like to postpone it to following the twenty fifth.
You'd like to postpone us again?
Yes, because I I really want to respond to this and let it a budget uh taking up time. I would prefer, I would like to address that officially. Remember last time?
You promise? Right. Uh, okay, so you're asking simply that item F be continued to the meeting of the twenty fifth?
Right.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, that was seconded by Councilor uh Wildenhan. Item three?
Item three is a communication from Christopher Montalto Supervisor Distribution Design Rhode Island Energy to the Honorable Members of the Pawtucket City Council submitting a joint poll installation at Weeden Street to be approved pending approval from the Director of Public Works. I move to file that communication?
The movement, yes, you do. The move by Council Skoviac, second by Councilor Russo, that a communication from Christopher Montalto Supervisor of, excuse me, Distribution Designer Rhode Island Energy, the Honorable Members of Pawtucket City Council submitting a joint poll installation at Weeden Street to be approved pending the approval of the Director of Public Works. His motion is to file a communication. All in favor? Aye. Opposed motion carries.
Item number four, communication from his honor, Mayor Donald uh Grebien to the Honorable Members of the Pawtucket City Council submitting the following appointment as a member of the Parks Commission for confirmation. Uh, Grace Evans, uh, Pedano, thirty eight Felsmore Ave, Pawtucket, Rhode Island, zero two eight six one. Term expires on the first Monday of August, twenty twenty eight. I call for confirmation on a roll call vote.
The move by Council Russo, second by Council Moreno, that communication from his honor Mayor Donald Grebien, the Honorable Members of Pawtucket City Council submitting the following appointment as a member of the Parks Commission. Grace Evans Pedano, thirty eight Elsmer, uh, Felsmer Avenue for a term that expires the first Monday in August of two thousand and twenty eight. The motion is for confirmation on a roll call vote. Is there any discussion? Clerk will call the roll.
President Mercer.
Yes.
Councilor Russo.
Yes.
Councilor Codier? Council Gregor?
Yes.
Council Moran?
Yes.
Council Moreno? Council Rubio? Council Skoviac?
Yes.
Council Wildenhan?
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Council, would you take it, please?
Yes, absolutely. Item number five, communication from his honor, Mayor Donald Grebien to the Honorable Members of the Pawtucket City Council submitting the following appointment as a member of the Planning Commission for confirmation. Lee Eskilson?
Eskelson.
Eskelson, thank you. C V E, C H E, twenty two Blaisdell Ave, Pawtucket, Rhode Island, zero two eight six zero. Term expires on the first Monday in January, twenty thirty one. I call for confirmation on a roll call vote.
The move by Council Russo, second by Councilor Codier, that a communication from Mayor Donald Grebien to the Honorable Members of Pawtucket City Council submitting the following appointment as a member of the Planning Commission. Lee Eskelson, C V E and C H E, twenty two Blaisdell Avenue for a term that expires the first Monday in January of two thousand and thirty one. The motion is for a confirmation on a roll call vote. Is there any discussion? Councilor?
Yeah, I'm just curious. The expiration date is in twenty thirty one.
Six years. There's six, six year, six year terms to plan and.
Yeah, it expires this year, so we when it expires the same year, we just give it another term. So.
That answer your question?
It does.
All right. Uh, that place, in that case, clerk will call a roll.
President Mercer.
Yes.
Councilor Russo.
Yes.
Councilor Codier.
Yes.
Council Gregor.
Yes.
Council Moran.
Yes.
Council Moreno. Council Rubio.
Yes.
Council Skoviac?
Yes.
Council Wildenhan?
Yes.
Nine to zero. The Finance Committee submits the following resolution with the recommendation for approval, a resolution authorizing a fifteen year tax stabilization agreement for Pine Street Development LLC at the property at three twenty seven Pine Street, plot forty four, lot five twenty nine. A call for approval on a roll call vote.
Second. The move by Councilor Wildenhan, second by Councilor Moran, that a resolution authorizing a fifteen year tax stabilization agreement for Pine Street Development LLC for the property at three twenty seven Pine Street, plus its plat forty four, lot five ninety two be approved on the recommendation of the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion on that? Clerk will, clerk will call a roll.
President Mercer.
Yes.
Councilor Russo.
Yes.
Councilor Codier.
Yes.
Council Gregor.
Yes.
Council Moran.
Yes.
Council Moreno. Council Rubio?
Yes.
Council Skoviac?
Yes.
Council Wildenhan?
Yes.
Nine to zero. Number seven, the annual operating budget ordinance, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, as amended for second passage, I call for approval on a roll call vote.
The move by Councilor Wildenhan, second by Council Rubio and second Councilor Moran, the uh approval will be given for second passage of the annual budget, operating budget ordinance for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, as amended. Uh, motion is for second passage on a roll call vote. Before I open up to any discussion, if there is any, I'd just like to make a couple different um uh acknowledgements. So when we, when we finally approved the amendment and amended budget last week, it had to do with a one time grant to the police, uh, the police department, the school department. Um, and we, our dialogue kind of centered on an M O U acknowledging that this was not going to be uh maintenance of effort, considered maintenance of effort. And I, I actually have received an email from the superintendent of schools. Uh, they're not going to have an M O U ready by now, but we don't need an M O U. What we're really doing is setting the budget. Whether it gets handed over or not is an entirely different thing. So it doesn't affect us voting on second passage tonight. But having said that, the superintendent was very clear that uh that he, he and the school department were, were very pleased that we saw fit to give them the one time grant. They, he understands fully that it is a grant. And um they would have a, an M O U signed soon as they can. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there. We don't need the M O U now to do what we are doing tonight. But everybody is on the same page of what it is we did. They are graciously going to accept and looking forward to um, looking forward to responding. And I sent him an email back basically saying, thank you for the clarification and that it really was an olive branch by the the city council and that we look forward to working as diligently as we can for the students while still working as diligently as possible for um the taxpayers. One other thing I was.
Can I just jump in? Do we eventually get a copy of the M O U when it's completed?
Yeah, it would be signed by both parties anyway. Um, but it really, at that point, will just be a formality. They understand we're giving them five hundred. It is not, the M O U just basically says, we understand that it's not maintenance of effort and that there are some reporting requirements that we would like to see. We will iron that out.
Okay.
Um, I was just notified today that the the state legislation about non owner occupied has passed both chambers and had and was signed just today by the governor. So it is, it has become law and um what we did last week is fortunately not affected. I just want to say one la- one last thing about that marathon last, at the last meeting. We, we all kind of held our nose and did what we had to do um for the betterment of all sides. We had to go through the process we went through and um, you know, I'm glad to hear that the school department understands it was an olive branch, understands that uh we're looking to collaborate and work together. But I I heard a few days afterward, and it's not from anybody in the higher up of the school department, but you know, they they took exception to Councilor Wildenhan. And for the
Who doesn't?
Uh, for the, for the life of me, I, I can't understand it because what, what Council Wildenhan did leading up to and then throughout that meeting was Herculean, to be perfectly honest. He he drove us where we needed to go. We had to evaluate if we could stay under the, under the cap and how we could and whether we could and whether we wanted to. He also put together the, the uh amendments going forward to go over the cap, showing us exactly what was going to be necessary. It was he did us and the city a huge service. Knowing full well what his DNA tells him about being a watchdog of, of taxpayer money. It's in his very DNA not to raise taxes, number one, and certainly not to exceed the cap. So when we finally came to the end, it might have been lost on some folks. It, it wasn't lost on me. I went back and watched the video and I know it wasn't lost on Councilor Russo. Because we had one no vote, one more no vote, which is exactly what Councilor Wildenhan's DNA was telling him to do. And he voted yes for the, the betterment of each of us and for the city as a whole. So I think we owe him. Instead of pejoratives and name calling, I think we owe him uh a debt of gratitude. And anybody who's, I'll say, I heard a couple of people say he's an a hole. Uh, I just pray that they don't, that they, they are not voters in this city and that they are not voters in District Two. Because he certainly made the voters in District Two proud with his efforts, as he always does. And I, I don't mean to gush, but I, I think it was, I think it was seriously Herculean. And then at the end of the vote, go back and listen to it. Councilor Russo said, thank you, Mark. It wasn't too audible. You have to be listening to it, but um you know, none of us wanted to exceed the cap. We certainly didn't want to exceed the cap by two point five million dollars, but there really was no other alternate. Without decimating the schools, without pulling back just five hundred thousand, which we could have done. Uh, I, I think we did our job the best we could faced with ten different bad alternatives. Um, we will have to listen and, and respond to the voters. You know, this is the first time ever we've exceeded the cap. We exceeded it by two and a half million dollars, give or take. But I'm comfortable standing behind that decision.
I'll just add the only exception to that would be the only no vote on the budget. So.
Yes.
And personally, in my opinion, if you're going to vote no on a budget, you should offer something alternatively to that as opposed to just voting no. But again, that's just my opinion. I've served so many years. So anyways.
Okay. Anybody else on the uh, Councilor, uh, uh, God, Councilor Russo, I'm sorry.
Well, first of all, uh, thank you for bringing it to light. Um, I want to thank Councilman and Chair Wildenhan for your hard work. Exceeding the cap is not something I felt very comfortable with. And with the scenarios, I certainly didn't feel comfortable taking five percent away from, on the school department that would have do some really harm down the road. And uh, and I appreciate you voting yes at the end and recognizing uh that we needed that a eighth vote. And you know, the, the five hundred thousand dollars that we give the school department, they'll use it as they see fit. I saw tremendous need with the cab uh with the Slater and the middle schools. Um, so giving that one time grant, I think. Um, so giving that one-time grant, I think, I thank Council Rubio for offering that up and, um, you know, putting that down as a motion. Um, but we have to protect the taxpayers. It's so, so challenging. We see other cities that are challenging with that as well. You see it on the news often, uh, with school budgets and, and, and towns. It, it, it's, it's, it's tough right now out there. Um, but, you know, you, you went, Council Wildon, you, you, you did something by voting yes to, for the betterment of the city, and, and I guess, you know, it was just a reflex to say thank you, and I'll say thank you again, uh, for that, because, um, it, it, yeah, I don't like going over the cap. I mean, you know, the, the levy, um, but we needed to do what we needed to do, um, as a council, and, uh, we have to move forward now. So, thank you for your hard work, and thank all my colleagues too for, you know, going through that marathon, but that's what we get elected to do, to represent the best way we can. And, uh, there were going to be long nights, and that was a long night, and I'm here for it anytime we need to, so thanks.
Anybody else, Councilor?
Well, in the interest of not making this another long night, um, I really do appreciate the comments from my colleagues, President Mercer and Councilor Ruzo and all the rest of my colleagues. Um, I think I want to reiterate that this aspect of being a city councilman, by the way, whoever thinks that we get paid a lot of money to get called an a-hole, and it's more than two people, um, they're wrong. Uh, you got, you got to invest the time. If you look into doing this job, and as Councilor Moran said, he's been here for a long period of time and, and has done it, you have to invest the time to do the right thing. It may not be the popular thing, but it's the right thing. So, I, I think I clearly don't want this to go by without, again, uh, this work gets done, not just by me, by my colleagues and, and everybody else, but especially the, the Finance Director, Jeanne Boski, and her staff, and, and, uh, the mayor's chief of staff, Tracy, you know, it, it, it really is, it's a collaboration to get the work done. And I want to say, from one aspect, that I'm, I'm only disappointed that all of the elected individuals couldn't be a little more creative, and I'm not talking about us, more so than I am talking about the school committee. There was an opportunity for us to do something that would have been monumental, just like they've done it in the past. And I, I appreciate Chairman Chabino back in the time when we said we didn't have the money, and he was willing to do things like this. We need to be that creative as we were back then. We need to be that way today. So, I, I really do want to express my disappointment that they didn't really want to come to the table. They were more, uh, worried about how it would affect them and how it would look on them. Unfortunately, they still do, like we said to Superintendent Buck, they have a monumental task in front of them to get their facts straight. And as we do every budget year, making sure that every tax dollar that's spent is spent wisely. And if I leave here tonight with anything being said, it's to, a message to the school department and the school committee, do the same thing we do. Look at things, adjust your, your thought process, and try to think that this isn't only about kids. This is about the taxpayers, who the, the parents of the kids are. You know, as much as we all want to support the children in this city, make sure they have a great new school, make sure they have a great education, we also got to make sure that we can pay for it. You know, um, there were some, some things in the capital budget that recognized the school department going over one billion dollars. When I saw that, it kind of made me blush, because I think that, they think that they're just going to go back to the taxpayers in this, in this city and keep requesting more money and, and it's going to get thrown at them. You have to account for it responsibly. So do that, and I think that we can all work together towards accomplishing a lot more things for the children, but for the whole city.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Gregor, do you have your hand up or not?
Uh, yes, just, uh, in regards to, uh, just to be clear, I voted no based on principle and the fact that I find it to be fiscally irresponsible. Um, and I stand on my vote, and I will be voting no again. So, uh, Counselor Moran, you're certainly entitled to your vote and your opinion. I appreciate if you're not unnecessarily uncharacterize my vote or suggest anything other. I wouldn't do that to you, and I appreciate the courtesy.
I don't think I did that, but I'll disagree. I'll disagree to that. You know,
We'll leave it at that.
Thank you. So, I don't know what we did that was fiscally irresponsible. Um, matter of fact, I think we were as fiscally responsible as we possibly could. We presented an option to not go over the cap. So if that's what we're referring to as fiscally irresponsible, we had an option. We had an option to cut two and a half million dollars, but it was a difficult cut. So if I, I, I take exception to the fiscally irresponsible. I don't, I don't know, I don't know what else we could have done. Um, if going over the cap is irresponsible, not voting to stay under the cap is equally irresponsible. So I don't, I don't know how you can have it both ways and say that I didn't want to go over the cap, it's financially irresponsible to go over the cap, and vote no on the only option possibly available to stay under the cap. So it's, it's, it's very disingenuous.
Uh, uh, okay, now you're going to make a response to this, and this is the last comment I want to make, okay? I don't want this to turn into something, I, I'm entitled to my vote. I find it to be fiscally responsible, and the alternative of depriving the, uh, the children of sufficient money to, to run the schools, that you get them the education that they need to be immoral. Okay? Especially in light of the fact that I am not sure how we find ourselves in a current deficit that we, the city supposedly is, when we just came from a once-in-a-lifetime fifty-eight million-dollar opera money designed to help the city move forward and everything else. So, for which, you know, we don't have the full accounting of everything. Where's the money that's been spent? I know where some of the items we have voted on, but this city council was irresponsible. It's a responsibility to make sure that demonstration was a given free, feted fifty-eight million dollars to do it as they please. It is, there's no such thing, there's no accountability. There's no oversight.
So how you voted?
I am done discussing this.
Well, you're done, but I'm not. So how you voted was the responsible thing, without having any backup whatsoever. That's fine, you can live with that. That's fine. All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk will call a roll.
President Mercer?
Yes.
Councilor Ruzo?
Yes.
Councilor Codere?
Yes.
Councilor Gregor?
No.
Councilor Moran?
Yes.
Councilor Moreno? Councilor Rubio?
Yes.
Councilor Scoviac?
Yes.
Councilor Wildon?
Yes.
Eight to one.
Item number nine, the Committee on Claims and Pending Suits returns the following
Did we skip eight?
Oh, sorry.
Yes. Yeah, we did. We did.
It's the flu. I know it's working on you.
I'm dead.
Number eight, the Capital Budget Ordinance, twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six, for, I call for passage on, for second passage on, for a roll call vote.
I got me flustered. The move by Councilor Wildon Hain, I think it was seconded by Councilor Rubio. Um, at approval be given to the budget ordinance for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, for second passage on a roll call vote. Is there any discussion? Clerk will call a roll.
President Mercer?
Yes.
Councilor Ruzo?
Yes.
Councilor Codere?
Yes.
Councilor Gregor?
Yes.
Councilor Moran?
Yes.
Councilor Moreno?
Yes.
Councilor Rubio?
Yes.
Councilor Scoviac?
Yes.
Councilor Wildon?
Yes.
Nine to zero.
Item number nine, the Committee on Claims and Pending Suits returns the following claim for damages against the city, Denise Woodard, Woodard?
Woodard, yep.
Yes. Uh, from Safeco Insurance Company of America, will build, by Wilbur Company, for the amount of two thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents. That was approved for that amount. I move to approve on a roll call vote.
The move by Councilor Rubio, second by both Councilor Moran, I mean, sorry, Moreno and Councilor Ruzo, that the Committee on Claims and Pending Suits returns the following claim for damages against the city from Denise Woodard and Safeco Insurance Company of America by Wilbur Company, uh, for a police collision in the amount of two thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents, and that claim in that amount is recommended to be approved, correct? Any discussion? Clerk will call a roll.
President Mercer?
Yes.
Councilor Ruzo?
Yes.
Councilor Codere?
Yes.
Councilor Gregor?
Yes.
Councilor Moran?
Yes.
Councilor Moreno?
Yes.
Councilor Rubio?
Yes.
Councilor Scoviac?
Yes.
Councilor Wildon? Nine to zero.
No further business coming before the Pawtucket City Council. I make a motion.
But hang on, I'm
Never mind, sorry.
Councilor?
Yep. Uh, just to end on a good note, uh, I just wanted to say thank you to Rose Gaten from Collier's Engineering and Design, regards to the, uh, updates on Elizabeth Baldwin Elementary School.